Central Farm and Garage Select Board of Vote to group license renewal for Central Farm and Garage for 2026, Class Two Use Cars.
Is that?
For Berman?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Was that a function of the question of on the cars?
No.
Um, I moved that we.
Did that get her doll?
Or that permission?
They went, but.
Oh, okay.
So, um, I don't know the bylaw in space that were repaired must have helped before. I don't know, um, if I had no report or.
Some came through the website that they needed a different, different license because they asked to get more than four cars.
Yeah, but someone can I thought I was maybe so commissioned them from not.
And I thought, yeah. And I thought I think in, um, for school.
They came to the, uh, planning board and they're supposed to be some that aside there. So it doesn't work. And they stopped parking in the street.
Thank you.
Do you feel that we have to wait until that's fully resolved?
They can't about business. So.
Yeah, I haven't.
Um, yeah, neither, but they need a different license as well because there are more vehicles that have attraction.
They have attraction. Delilah's, uh, on soon and she can't hear very well. Would you like a microphone or can you speak up?
I guess we need it.
Okay.
Okay, I'm with the please for Central Farm and Garage, class renewal of their Class Two Use Car License.
All favor.
Aye.
Upper Pioneer Valley Veteran Services District Select Board of Vote on renewal of membership for the next two years.
What does it cost first?
All of every year.
You guys now, um, Delilah. Delilah?
Oh, yeah, I can hear you now that the second time you said Delilah, sorry, Sandy, was I really loud just then? Oh, okay.
So all of every year's agreement of Pioneer Valley Veterans. Straight by assessments to the member communities based on a fifty percent. Equivalent fifty percent population model is by member communities time to consider membership in the district for the upcoming fiscal year within the guidelines according to the MGL Chapter one fifteen district information for formation. Towns not wishing to join must notify mass DVS and submit their own plan for compliance of this municipality with MGL Chapter one fifteen. Spreading district assessments would be recalculated, resubmitted to the paid maintenance vertical.
So what did it, what did it say the amount was that our assessment was?
Oh. My figures in there.
Well.
I'm sure we do it every year.
Yeah, I, I think I moved that we approved the Upper Valley, Upper Pioneer Valley Veterans District. Veterans Services District, uh, on the renewal of our membership for the next two years because I'm sure that that is something that we do. I think we have probably fairly significant number of veterans in town.
But we have to be covered by something.
Is that what this is?
That's fair.
Okay.
So I would second that.
All favor.
Aye.
Miss Lady's correspondence, thank you letter from the Town of Ashville Police Department Chief of Police Beth. Bezo expressing appreciation for the sharing of the Plainfield Police Department utility vehicle by Police Chief Justin Listfield for the Ashville Fall Festival.
Thank you.
And then notice from ever source regarding in the planned and scheduled vegetation maintenance work on the transmission right away that is located in Plainfield. Summer Street as well as West Hill Road, this work has been scheduled for the winter of twenty twenty five. Will involve the removal of several trees that have died and have extensive decay that could impact power.
Okay. So, um. I'd like us to, to add something to the agenda that is there, um, which relates to the, uh, large scale. Ground mounted photovoltaic array and. Battery energy storage system at sixty six North Union Street or Union Street. Yeah.
North, north.
North.
Or North Street.
It doesn't relate. It relates to the, then.
Well, it, it does, it, it, it is the topic that, one of the things that I want to say to town for this is that. That project, if we are to apply for a moratorium, would not be eligible for inclusion under the moratorium. That was the one thing I really wanted people to understand that.
The microphone isn't on.
I'm sorry, oh.
Of disposal, you know?
Yeah, it is, it is on. Um, that, that the, uh. So that project would not be subject to the moratorium. I think that's what I will let you introduce, Peter, but I did speak with the lawyer and he, he was telling me, this is just sort of the context and background. That many towns in Massachusetts are struggling with the, um, influx of solar. Large scale solar projects and not really having been prepared for the kinds of things that were going to be required of their bylaws. And so, um, but that. We can't do anything about it retroactively after an application has been tried out. Because, um. That they simply aren't subject to any moratorium or any of your bylaws. We have to get out in front of it and that's the reason why you wouldn't want to think about calling moratorium. Peter?
Yeah, I point fifty three South East Street, that's the planning board. I drafted an article, uh, for consideration for, as Cheryl tell me, for a moratorium, I'll read it. Uh, whereas the current zoning bylaw does not identify battery energy storage systems best. As an allowed standalone use and their use is required, is a required component of art scale ground bounded solar arrays as regulated. In section nine of the zoning bylaws. Shallow town vote to impose a moratorium on all future special permit applications for large scale ground mounted solar arrays and battery energy storage systems. For a period of six months to allow the planning board time to review the current bylaw, assess the public safety requirements. ascertain the potential environmental impacts and draft appropriate amendments to the current zoning bylaw for adoption. At the twenty twenty sixth annual town meeting or a future special town meeting that may be required before the expiration of the moratorium period. So, so essentially what this does, it gives us a chance to, uh, add. Battery energy storage systems as a component of the solar array, which we have no regulations for currently.
Right.
It allows us to look at the current setback requirements, see if they're adequate to ensure that they do not have an adverse effect on our neighbors. It allows us to assess the actual amount of water it's going to take if we have one of those fires to make sure that we have adequate capacity. To contain a fire if one happens. And the real, the real thing in my mind is that we could require water to be provided onsite in storage.
So can I, can I interrupt here real quick? Uh, Pete, that's assuming that you're going to put. Water on the fire, which our understanding is that we are not going to put water on that fire. Uh, for one, the EPA is now, sounds like now recommending that we don't do that because it spreads the contaminants in the groundwater. Uh, and there's not enough water in town to put a battery that size out, so.
Just, yeah. I thought, so.
Please for.
Not to extinguish, but, but to contain what you fool that other batteries fail, the fire isn't spread. That's the current, it's my understanding.
That's right, I'm not getting that close to it. Won't happen.
Alright, so, so. I don't think we need to decide.
No, but I just said, right, so that's, that's interesting that we should have that once we get ready to draft by. That has to be.
Yeah, we need to have Rob in the room playing for it, when we're reviewing our sounding bylaws because he has specialized knowledge.
Exactly. And it's a new, it's a new thing in the. Well, everybody. So, um, I don't know what the procedure is to all special town meeting or if you want to run this by K P Law and.
I didn't want to run the language by K P Law, but I will make a motion that we call a special town meeting. And we can, uh, I can do that tomorrow morning, get in touch with K P Law. And I can probably get them, I can actually send it to them tonight, maybe they would respond quickly. And hopefully we could get the, I mean, I'm feeling great urgency about getting the special town meeting scheduled because it takes fourteen days notice. And we know that there are several other applications coming in. We want to get a moratorium in place as soon as possible so that we can stop accepting more applications. For large scale ground mounted photovoltaic because it's, they are coming, they are queuing up. And, and we need a little bit of breathing space to consider. How we're going to deal with this new reality that didn't exist the last time we revised our bylaws. So I would like to make a motion that we schedule a special town meeting for, uh, fourteen days from tomorrow, which is Wednesday. And that would be. So. The twelve of November. Yeah. And if for any reason we're unable to get. If, if for any reason we're unable to get language of the article finalized by tomorrow. I would propose it either thirteenth, like have that contingency in motion. And then we can move forward. Um, so that's my mo, my motion, that we schedule a special town meeting for Wednesday, November twelfth or Thursday. November thirteenth, depending upon the speed with which the articles can be drafted.
How did that state for the thirteenth? You state as or as soon as the legal council has provided the language.
No, I don't understand the pressure. Want us to become nags. Which I'm happy to do. And I think this guy will turn, I mean.
Well, I think so too.
It's only a paraphrase. Yeah, alright, and you're right. So November twelfth or as soon as is feasible after council reviews the language of the art.
All favor.
I, and I do know that for that particular town meeting, there will, will be at least one other article. Because there was a bill that, or something that the, alright, I'm gonna let Ross explain it, I missed that. It was some, it was a bill that was supposed, it was supposedly emailed to him earlier, but they never received it. And it was incurred in fiscal year twenty twenty five, but they never saw the bill until fiscal year twenty twenty six. So in order to get a previous year's bill paid, it has been proved as special town leaving and there will be a, an article to that effect.
Yeah, so I can, I can elaborate just a little bit on that.
Sure.
Uh, so the total amount is two thousand two hundred and sixty eight dollars for, uh, fire hose and ladder testing. Uh, I had a feeling that this was going to be close because if we did it on the thirteenth of June. Um, but they never mailed us anything, they mailed, they said they emailed something, which I go back through my email and it's not there. So we didn't get it till September. So I have the money in our budget for this year and I'm asking for more money, um, I'll use it out of this year's budget. We just need the vote to be able to pay it because it was a year, it was a bill per last fiscal year.
Your article is a no brainer.
I do have one other, since we're going to have a special town meeting, right, to do it all at once.
Absolutely.
Um, I would like, I would, uh, like to propose, um, that the. Now, I'm open to discussion of this, but I'd like to propose that the town transfer ownership of the old decommissioned engine one. Nineteen ninety two International Pierce Fire Truck, um, to the Fire Association, uh, to sell. Uh, so that we can make space in our garage, uh, and it's a piece of apparatus that we've replaced. Uh, and so we don't want to incur any additional costs in maintaining it at this point.
That's different from the panel truck.
That is different from the panel truck and it's different from the panel truck in a couple of ways. One, that it's a completely different vehicle, um, but the panel truck was, I just, full transparency, the panel truck was, um, purchased. For a dollar, I think, or donated.
Donated, yeah.
The nineteen ninety two International Pierce was purchased, um, through town funded, uh, needs. So that's where I'm, uh, we would love to use that, whatever we can sell it for, go back towards equipment. Um, but we also understand that if that's not tax wishes that, um, should go back into general runs, we get that too, so. Full transparency, we absolutely would put it for a use.
Question?
Yes.
Can you have those two board articles drafted by tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm, I don't know that that takes a motion, that's just, these are, this is everything's going to be included in the special town meeting. And do I need, does there need to be a different motion?
Either, that's purple and separate.
Uh, we have to accept the warrant R of S. I moved that we accept the two additional warrant articles, uh, proposed by the fire department.
Yes, that's right.
All favor.
I.
In fact, are you sure I made it?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to coordinate tomorrow. Um. In fact, if I have home by four o'clock, I can even, even bring them to your house because I have no transfer station for. But I'll let you know, is that okay?
I have some way to get you there.
Get where? Yeah, I think there's, some, we were talking about that before the meeting actually started, but there is a key at the.
Town.
Town offices. I'll pick, they, they give us four keys, I'll pick one up tomorrow morning, how's that? Then I will have one, so I can give it to you, but.
I was going to ask too, if one, you should just get like a little magnetic key box or something. Under the bulletin board and get it posted.
Or we just want something on a cable for tape.
Yeah.
Just leave it hanging there.
So they won't get lost.
We don't want someone to be able to get the key loose out of a magnetic box and then walk off with it inadvertently. So we want it attached to the building on some sort of a extension chain or something.
Yeah.
So that it's always there. If they try to walk off with it, they're going to get stopped.
Can't do that outlaw.
I, I tried that.
So much, there's, there's just a little keyhole.
Options for whether for boards, if not.
I tried that today, here it kind of flew over.
Any other business or questions?
I have a question.
Delilah.
Report, Delilah.
Thank you, I was, um, ex, uh, excited to see that Shannon's position after Shannon has. Been so generous with us over the last year plus, um, since her resignation, I saw that the position has been posted. And I had some questions about the executive assistant position, um. When I looked at the job description, uh, I want to be able to share this out with people who I think might be, um, interested. And when I look at the job position, it looks like the same description that was from the year before and I have, I'm just curious if it's. If it is the same description, is it the same number of hours per week and the same rate of pay? Um, I know that it was a, the description itself seemed like it was a lot of work for, um, the number of hours, so I'm just curious about that. And then also will there be a, a joint community select board member, um, uh, group that's doing the hiring again like last time?
Well, actually, last time that was, um, preview of applicants and then it was the, the select board has the souls on our end.
Yes.
But I think that the job description was edited somewhat. Um, there were some things taken out, I don't remember all the specifics, Karen was really in charge of it, but since I was on the original group. And, um, I think it remains an aspirational job description in the sense that, uh, yes, the hours remain the same. I mean, we don't have the budget or the approval at this point to make it a full time job. But it is, um, it, it is clearly more work than can be accomplished. By one person in twenty hours. Is that fair? Yes. So.
We all get that.
You want.
Wait a minute, I can't hear you, say that again, Judy?
It is. Responsibilities accomplished by any one person in the, in the hour, we all agree. But all of the responsible points are listed, you requesting that some point or another to. So it's the range of. It's not necessarily everything that has to be accomplished. It's harder.
I, I hear you, I just wonder then, does that prevent people who might be interested from applying? If we really do believe that the position as it's written is more work than the hours it will take. Well, could that discourage people from applying like this? I'm just wanting, it, it's, if I were looking at a job description that looked way bigger than the hours that were allotted, I would be hesitant. Um, and I'm curious if that's going to be discouraging for other people. I also wonder, um, if we could be more clear with what is the rate of pay or the range of pay and the hours so that people just. That's common practice now for job descriptions, putting that out front, so people. I can't, I can't hear you anymore through the mic, I don't know if the battery is, I don't know what's going on, but we can scrap the mic and maybe just scream at me because I can't hear you.
I think that we as a select want to have a conversation on that. Uh, the last time when we hired Shannon. When Paul was in. Before Paul resigned, it was a salary position. And so. And then when Shannon came in, it became more hourly and may, that may have been because Paul was working two jobs. And then when it was split apart. Select Board has to have a discussion.
It's, it's okay, I can't hear anything, it's okay. It's all right, um, can you just answer with a yes and no if the, if there will be a screening, um, committee or preview committee? Can you just say yes or no?
I don't think we have the time, I'd say no. I mean, I, that's just my opinion, I'm not saying it, I'm not speaking for the whole select board, they can disagree with me.
No, I want them all.
I wasn't part of the last hiring. We have, we have quite a few of them.
Oh, I was checking. Yeah.
One of the reasons that happened, I think, was because you all, if you, if two of you are meeting in between the, um. You can't meet in between meetings, because that's a quote. Right?
We can share materials. So. Or has all these applications, she can send them to. Discuss them. Of us, she can send them to me that we can discuss them, the three of us and. I mean, I presume since it's a public meeting, we could share them with the town and anybody who has a strong opinion can come and make a case. I think it keeps the, and the typically what has been done in the past. Or hiring of positions in the town. It's a select board will schedule an interview with each of the applicants and those usually do not happen within a Tuesday night meeting. Usually happen in. Public meeting. Most other people. Interview the people and they leave and then you have a discussion about what to think.
Yes, I remember that last year there was a question of, uh, would it be helpful to have a little sensitivity to people who might not be wanting to put their resume out publicly? Uh, before they know they were for sure possibly going to get the position, but I think that that doesn't matter if we go back to the old way, I just remember that sensitivity before.
I don't think it matters because we have a lot of applications.
Great, okay, thank you.
That's the standard public. Am I wrong about that, who knows? That's the standard public process. Sorry. And we have by law. And we have annual by law.
It's just to get that on the town meeting.
This is just, we're not, we're not, we're not editing the zoning bylaws. We are asking to have a moratorium on applications under our current zoning bylaw. Until we are able to reconsider those in light of the new wave of solar projects coming our way. And then.
On the bylaw.
You can't revise the bylaw in a special town meeting, it has to be in the annual town meeting thing, okay, well, there you go.
Hey, you said that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, yeah, I'm going to double check with K P Law and make sure they, they agree with that because I know that every town is scrambling to try and revise their zoning bylaws.
It's a fact that wouldn't be a bylaw.
I don't think, the, this vote would be a moratorium.
Right, it would be a moratorium and then if we wanted to change a bylaw, if we could do it sooner than special, than annual town meeting. At a special meeting specifically for the bylaw, we could publish the bylaw, you know?
I don't think so.
Okay. Well, we have to look at MGL because they might, the law changes too, I don't know.
Yeah, whether it's down votes.
Bylaws are all about by.
Yeah. Well, speed is of the essence here is all I have to say because if, if we don't, our bylaws don't matter because the, the state. Large scales photovoltaic array commission will be citing. If I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong about this, Peter, I got this out of the article, that for projects, name of projects that are over twenty five thousand watts. They will be citing, they, the, the, if the developer only needs a single permit from that group. Irrespective of town. Irrespective of town bylaws.
Right, that's not.
No. But the sooner we can revise our zoning bylaw.
That is.
The more likely we would be because that law doesn't take until March first. I don't know if we would do this or if others would want to do this, but we could potentially. Appeal that law that was passed by the legislature and take it to the Supreme Court.
There are some deep parts.
Is there a limit on the moratorium?
Yes.
I think there would have.
No, it's not a limit. We can set whatever we want, but six months, both of us in the time frame to be ready for any time.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure was set. We didn't have a gap there that would open it up for. More applications in between.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Oh, I move with you, Derek.
I'll second that question.
All in favor?